Precinct one reports fourteen present, eleven absent. Precinct two.
Present, sixteen absent.
Precinct two reports thirteen present, sixteen absent. Precinct three.
Present, ten absent.
Precinct three reports twenty present, ten absent. Precinct four.
Present, seventeen absent.
Precinct four reports thirteen present, seventeen absent. Precinct five.
Twenty present, nine absent.
Precinct five reports twenty present, nine absent. Precinct six.
Seventeen present, twelve absent.
Precinct six reports seventeen present, twelve absent. Precinct seven.
Twenty present, ten absent.
Precinct seven reports twenty present, ten absent. Precinct eight.
Twelve present, sixteen absent.
Precinct eight reports twelve present, sixteen absent. At large.
Fifteen present, six absent.
Eighteen present, six absent at large. One hundred forty-seven members being present, we have a quorum. Will the monitors please bring forward their attendance sheets?
Good evening, everyone. Special Town Meeting, October twentieth, two thousand fourteen, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either Constable of the Town of Milford and Sutton County, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper Town Hall of the Milford Town Hall, fifty-two Main Street, on the twentieth day of October, two thousand fourteen A.D., at seven thirty P.M., and then and there to act upon the following articles. Article one.
Motion made in second, we dispense with the reading of the articles. Does any vote occur to be heard in the motion to dispense with the reading of the articles? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. The clerk will now read the officer's return.
Mr. Moderator. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass., date September twenty-second, two thousand fourteen. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the Town of Milford to meet in the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of this warrant in ten or more public places in Milford. Thomas O'Laughlin, Police Chief. Thank you.
I'll recognize the Chairman of the Finance Committee for the purposes of presenting a report to the meeting.
Now, I don't know what to do because the mic's over here. Mr. Moderator, Selectmen, Town Meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a good year, as you will see. Last June, the recommendations by this committee have been the same over the course of the last ten years. Our objectives have been reduce long-term debt, increase funding for infrastructure. We added five hundred thousand to the Highway Department budget a couple of years ago, and it's been maintained. Plan for short-term capital requirements, and maintain commitment to reduce the tax rate at least to a million dollars. Highlights of the recommended articles on the five-year capital plan. About three years ago, we presented to this committee, I mean, this board, and these, I mean, this group and the Selectmen, a process to maintain and control short-term and long-term capital debt. We asked every department head to put a five-year plan together, and it's a rolling five-year plan. So every year, they meet with subcommittee, and they go over the items that they require. And we tried to fit that into an arbitrary one million dollar capital budget. We budget one million every year, and we try to keep in that million, so we even out the expenditures over the course of time. So some of the articles that are on the warrant tonight, and you have our report, so you, this is redundant, from the Town Hall, gutters and heaters for two hundred and six thousand. That was on the five-year plan, but it wasn't scheduled to be done for another couple of years, but the heaters were failing more rapidly, the maintenance costs were higher, so it was prudent to move them up and replace them now. The gutters weren't done when we did the roof, and there was extra money in the roof budget, so the net to the gutters is about seventy thousand dollars. Parks Highway, Parks Department wants a new tractor, they gotta cut the grass, and Highway needs a new truck, total for two hundred and eight thousand. That was on the plan. Police Library and Fire, police needed computers. We talked to the police chief last year. It's a hundred thousand dollar allocation over four years. The library needs electrical upgrades and a couple of other things. They're running into problems with people coming in with their own personal devices. They have to plug them in. There's not enough room, so they're gonna get charging stations all over the place so people can use their devices. And the Fire Department wanted upgrades to the station on Birch Street. A lot of stuff's getting old, carpeting, et cetera. They need a new antenna to talk to people. Four hundred and thirty thousand. This is the light stuff. Some of the articles that we're recommending favorable on were not on the plan. Louisa Lake Dam Inspection. There's a problem with the dam, and we have to hire an engineering group to come over and tell us what the problems are. The state will start fining us if we don't do it. So that was a hundred thousand dollar outlay that we had to do. Senior Center Construction. When the Senior Center was built, we left a couple of rooms undone, and there was always a plan to finish them off. This was not on the plan, and the Finance Committee agreed that it was something that should be done, even though it was outside the process, and we gave Sue Clark, the director, the benefit of the doubt this year, and she promised us that all of her new stuff will be on the plan. For seventy-five thousand, it's gonna be an exercise room. Then, there's the sound system in upper Town Hall. This was also not on the plan. The Finance Committee felt that this was sort of important, and we deemed it somewhat of an emergency. We understand people way in the back end here, and it's been a problem. So the allocation will be fifty thousand, with the understanding that the audio system that gets installed will also be applicable to a visual system that we need to put in, because this is getting to the point where it's cumbersome, and we're gonna look at doing some better high-tech stuff. How am I doing so far? All right. Recommendations for this Town Meeting. There's an article to recommend one point four million in free cash be put back to the tax rate, as promised. We will spend about a million dollars in capital projects. We would like to increase stabilization accounts. We have two of them. Long-term stabilization account, short-term stabilization account, by one point seven five million. One million to the long-term, seven hundred and fifty thousand to the short-term. The short-term stabilization account deals with a lot of the five-year-plan articles that are coming up, and now we have about one point two, and this will bring it to about two million. Next year, or the following year, the Fire Chief wants a million-dollar truck, so we're putting money away to manage all of that and other things that come up. Reducing the debt. Last Town Meeting, this group authorized five point one million in spending for the youth center. We put one point one million towards that at that meeting, which left four million to put on the debt. We would like to put three million to that four million. So in the fall, in the spring, if we have any extra money, there'll be about nine hundred thousand to bond. We would like to pay that off and not bond anything. What that does for us is two things. A, get something off of the long-term debt. And when we take something off the long-term debt schedule, the long-term debt looks better for the investors, looks better for Moody's, and we don't draw it down as much when we pay for the thirty-six million dollar school. It will only go down to about nine million instead of four million. So this is a good investment for two reasons. We'll get the youth center done, and we won't put it on the debt schedule. And then we're gonna save a few bucks for later. Sorry while I turn the page. The next couple of slides are an excerpt from the MMA's September report. The MMA is Mass, 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 Municipal Mass, Massachusetts Municipal Association, and they, they're advocates, they're municipal advocates. They deal with the legislature, help try and pass laws to help the taxpayer, because their concern is that the state is taking more money than they're giving to the towns. And so I just put up a few charts, just for informational purposes. These are statewide numbers. First one is, since nineteen ninety, when they passed Prop. Two and a Half, the state went into a sharing mode. They would share the revenue with the towns. And over years, that's gotten less and less and less and less. And this chart shows that from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen, the number that they shared with the municipalities has dropped four hundred million dollars. Just, I have the report, you guys can read it, it's pretty interesting stuff. There's a chart that shows municipal aid as a share of state tax collections. Municipal aid is way down on the bottom, that yellow bar. The big blue bars are all the taxes that the state collects. This is what they give back to the towns. So this organization is trying to change that. They want more given back to the towns, which means the more we get, the less tax burden on the residential population. This, the blue bar is state aid, and the yellow bar is property tax. As you can see, the property tax far outweighs the state aid. That number should be the other way, or at least equal. It's not. So we're bearing the burden of our budget, as opposed to the state helping for a lot of unfunded mandates and a lot of things that they do. Infrastructure. The yellow bar is what is needed by the state to maintain or upgrade the infrastructure. The blue bar is what we get. And our share of the blue bar, I think, is like, what, ninety, three hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars approximately? That's what Scotty has to build roads, or repair roads. That's why we added an extra five hundred thousand to his budget, so we can improve that situation. I'm almost done. Twenty-seven more slides to go. All right. So just let's recap. We went into this, into this Town Meeting with five million in excess levy capacity, three point eight million in certified free cash, for eight point eight million dollars. We're recommending spending six million of that eight point eight, which leaves two point four, which, one point four will be excess levy capacity going into next year, and one point four for free cash for the spring. Things happen between now and the spring. And we also know that we have issues with Highway. Godfrey Brook is gonna come up forward, and we're gonna have to spend some money, so we're trying to save that and manage the money going forward. And I'm done.
Mr. Legore, as the member of the Personnel Board, would like to present a report to the body.
On behalf of the Board members, Charles Abramsom Jr., Vice Chair Dennis Carroll, Laura Chrisifouli, Warren Hella, and Shelley Leclerc, I respectfully present this report of progress regarding the classification and compensation study for Article Two, salaried and hourly-rated positions authorized by the Special Town Meeting of October twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. At that time, forty-nine hundred dollars was appropriated for this purpose. During the past year, our Board has worked continuously to produce a classification and compensation plan that will ensure salaried and hourly-rate employees are paid fair, equitable, and competitive wages at rates that are affordable within the limits of our Town Budget. During this period, we engaged with services of Don Jacobs of DI Jacobs Consulting to conduct a comprehensive study at a cost of forty-five hundred. Mr. Jacobs is no stranger to Milford, having conducted the previous Bennett Study in two thousand. There are nineteen salaried and thirty-five hourly-rated positions involved in this study. We have held eighteen meetings dedicated to the development of this plan, meeting at least monthly at Town Hall plus Saturday mornings at the police station. Two orientation sessions with staff members were held January ninth, two thousand fourteen, giving them an opportunity for input and a mechanism for updating their job descriptions if necessary. Wage rates for twelve comparable area communities were surveyed to test whether Milford rates were competitive. A third-grade level eight-step compensation plan is proposed for salary positions. The current plan is composed of eight grades and five steps. At third-grade level eight-step compensation plan is proposed for hourly-rated positions. The current plan is composed of eight grades and five steps. Expanding the number of steps from five to eight provides additional growth opportunities for personnel already at the maximum step. Consolidating the number of grades from eight to three provides more realistic and manageable groupings of positions with comparable responsibility levels. Current personnel's current wages were plotted along the proposed compensation plan steps. The resulting numbers are affordable when compared with historic annual percentage wage adjustments. At this time, we are preparing to present the proposed plan, the personnel who will be impacted by these changes. We look forward to presenting an enhanced Article Two for your consideration at the two thousand and fifteen annual meeting. Thank you.
Greg Johnson, the Chairman of the CIC Committee, has provided, okay, you're gonna summarize this.
Hello. So the report you should all have on your chairs is from the CIC. We couldn't get this out to you sooner with the warrant, because there were significant changes in both the number of capital articles coming before you, as reported to us, and some of them actually dropped off because of some reduced costs. So what you have in front of you is only the ranking of the projects that we reviewed, the eleven projects, and the, the normal breakdown that we sometimes put together have recently, of why one item is higher on the list than the item below it and above it. The rationale for why something is on the list higher or lower than it's shown in the ranking is not in this report, just due to time constraints with the revision of this report. But you do have the prioritization, and if anybody is curious as to why something's higher or lower, how it got to where it is on that list, I'd be happy to entertain those questions, either here or in the side afterwards. And otherwise, you should have all the information you need regarding the capital projects that came before the, before the CIC this cycle. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? If not, I'd like to take a couple minutes as the moderator of our Town Meeting, as we approach eighty years as a representative Town Meeting. Your history goes back to seventeen eighty. I'm happy to see some scouts up on the balcony. Years ago, we'd have the balconies filled with visitors and observers. But I think it's appropriate at this time just to give a plug for the book, Images of America. If you haven't seen it or seen a copy, it's easily available. It was produced by Deborah Eastman, Anne LaMontagne, and Marilyn Lovell. A lot of hard work went into the book, Images of Milford. As a former history teacher, I strongly recommend that, along with the book that's been out for a while, Paul Curran's book about Milford Chronicles. If you're interested in the history of our town, it's a great read. The story's a shot, you can pick it up and put it down. I'd strongly recommend that. And as a coincidence, they had the book signing yesterday, and I understand there was a yard sale, and someone came into my office today and produced a history, shows that the moderator dictates the pace of Town Meeting. And it was an article written by Paul Curran that appeared in the Milford Daily News. Unfortunately, not too many articles appear in the Milford Daily News about the history of Milford anymore, so you have to look to other sources. This was produced, written in November, November tenth, nineteen ninety-nine, fifteen years ago. And I think it's very fitting, as I read through it, and the comments that Paul had on previous Town Meetings, it ends up by saying this, and it's a compliment to you that have run for Town Meeting seats, and we don't have as many vacancies. Each year, Paul said fifteen years ago, Town Clerk Joe Arkouti goes a-begging for candidates in the nearly fifty years of the, fifty-year article written in the Daily News. At that time, there were twenty-eight vacancies. We don't have that anymore, so that's a tribute to those people that are running for Town Meeting seats and getting involved in our democracy. Just this last paragraph, it says, "The debate tonight may be sharp. At times, it may even border on personalities. But it won't be lofty or highfaluting. It will be right down to earth where it should be. And while government by Town Meeting continues, even in a modified form, we may hope that those citizens who would willingly surrender the duties of citizenship to an all-possessive statism," tying in with the Finance Committee report, "will finally see the error of their ways. Don't lose Town Meeting. Run. It's your democracy." So I think it's very appropriate, and I appreciate your indulgence. What's the pleasure of the meeting? Article one.
Mr. Moderator.
Selectman DeBartolomayus.
I move that the Town Vote to Raise and Appropriate the Sum of Eighteen Thousand Dollars to be utilized for the July Fourth, two thousand fifteen celebration.
Motion made in second, the Town Vote to Raise and Appropriate the Sum of Eighteen Thousand Dollars to be utilized for the July Fourth, two thousand fifteen celebration. The Finance Committee recommendation is?
It is unanimous favorable.
Favorable. Any other vote occur to be heard? If I don't recognize you by name when you get up, please identify yourself so that...
Good evening. My name is Chuck Hope. I'm from Precinct Two. I seriously think we should consider maybe bypassing or voting down this article. I'm a true-blooded American. I love the Fourth of July fireworks just as much as anybody else. But we have eighteen thousand dollars, I think, that we could use in other forms, whether it's going against some of the capital projects or some of the Town, whether it goes to the schools, or whether it goes to the Highway Committee. I think we could, we could better serve that money in other spaces. I did a little research. There's fifty-one, or fifty other towns in eastern Massachusetts that host fireworks displays in two thousand and fourteen, the closest one being Bellingham. So I think it would be favorable to vote this down this year and appropriate the money in, in other forms. Thank you.
Any other vote occur to be heard?
Moderator.
Mr. DeBartolomayus.
I mean, members, I can respect the previous speaker. This is something that we've done many years now. I think the people of Milford truly enjoy the fireworks. A lot of people don't go away on Fourth of July. A lot of people are here with their families. They have cookouts, they get relatives together and all that, and it's a beautiful thing. And I think we want to continue that. At night, a lot, many of these people go see fireworks. And I know I used to take my family there in the past. Many, many years ago, we tried to raise money by volunteerism, and it didn't work. So the Town Meeting members and people of the community said, please bring back the fireworks, because that's something that we want, just like the Santa Parade, all the other things that we do in Milford. We do it for the residents. This is something they receive directly, and I just think it's, it's a great thing to go down to Sumner Street and watch the people from Birmingham Court with their chairs, with their families, with their grandchildren, and it's just wonderful. And I think it's eighteen thousand dollars well-spent, and hopefully you'll approve it. Thank you.
Any other vote occur to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article two. Yes, our Treasurer, Irene Larivee. Larivee, sorry.
Article two's motion is, I move that the Town Vote to Transfer the Sum of One Point Five Million Dollars from the Sewer Department Retained Earnings Account to fund account number eight-three-five-zero, the Sewer Stabilization Account.
Motion made in second, the Town Vote to Transfer the Sum of One Million Five Hundred Thousand Dollars from the Sewer Department Retained Earnings Account, number six-zero-zero-zero dash three-one-nine-zero, to fund eight-three-five-zero Sewer Stabilization Account. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Irene?
The purpose of this article is basically to move the funds out of a bank account that's only earning zero point one-five percent interest into an investment account. On average, for the past year, has earned one point three-seven percent. Certified retained earnings from the Department of Revenue were two point five million dollars. We're asking to move one point five into investments, which still leaves one million dollars in the Sewer Retained Earnings Account if they need to appropriate at annual Town Meeting or for unforeseen purposes.
Does any other vote occur to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. Since no one spoke in opposition, this requires a two-thirds vote to transfer to a stabilization account. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. I'm not trying to discourage everyone from voting against it, but just because no one spoke on the article, I'll take the voice vote. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article three.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the Town Vote to Raise and Appropriate a Sum of Money in the Amount of Twenty Thousand Dollars to be Spent under the Jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the Purpose of MS-4 Storm Water Permit Compliance.
Motion made in second, the Town Vote to Raise and Appropriate a Sum of Money in the Amount of Twenty Thousand Dollars to be Spent under the Jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the Purpose of MS-4 Storm Water Permit Compliance. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Scott?
Ladies and gentlemen, the need for this article is for the continued implementation and compliance of Milford's MS-4 Storm Water Program. The amount we are asking for is the minimum to meet the expectations of our previous MS-4 Storm Water Permit. Therefore, I urge favorable support. Thank you.
Any other vote occur to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article four.
Mr. Moderator?
Selectmen DeBartolomérez.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $50,000, set some to be utilized to obtain and install an audio system in the upper town hall.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $50,000, set some to be utilized to obtain and install an audio system in the upper town hall. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Selectmen DeBartolomérez.
Town meeting members, once again, this article seeks the sum of $50,000 to install a new state-of-the-out sound system in upper town hall. It will also include an assisted listening system with nine units to help the hearing impaired. This will replace the current system, which is out of date and is not designed to permit all in attendance at town hall to properly hear the speakers at town hall meetings and functions. The new system will be designed specifically for the upper town hall. It will reduce the reverberation, the static, by utilizing highly directional loudspeakers. And the system will be able to throw sound deeper into the room and will provide high speech capacity in the rear of the hall as well as in the balcony. I think for too long, we've heard from you that we can't hear what's being said, we can't hear what's being articulated. Before, it was people with hard-of-hearing, then it became people with good hearing that couldn't hear. So we said, "We have to try to do something." So we formed a subcommittee, and they met many, many times. They had two demonstrations of the sound system. The system that, that we heard was truly tremendous. I mean, it's, you'll be able to hear from all segments, all areas, there's no static, no reverberation, and I think this is something that we want. You know, some, one person said to me, "You're spending $50,000." I said, "Yeah, but we have to be respectful to the town meeting members. They're spending millions of dollars, and they have to be, they have to hear what's being said." So this is, that will be done. I think the plan that we had has been achieved. We have to bring it to you for the first step. It'll make us ADA compliant, we'll have nine loops, so if a person with a hearing aid or a hearing impaired, it will be able to accommodate that person. But for the majority of people in this building, you'll be able to hear what's being said very clearly, and you'll be able to understand everything. Once we go off a bid, as the chairman of the FinCon said, we'll have video capacity, so we'll get all those prices. But I just think that, you know, once and for all, that we have a system that is accessible to all the people. When you'll be able to vote, you'll be able to hear everything, and I think that's out of respect to you, and we have, we should do that, and hopefully you'll support this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti, town meeting member from Precinct 8. I believe we do need a new sound system for this room. I truly believe this because, quite frankly, based on subsequent voting, I sometimes believe that you are not able to hear or understand what I am saying. In any case, I do support, and I believe that we do need a new sound system for this hall. I do have one concern, and in order to alleviate that concern, I will move to amend the previous motion in the following way. Please bear with me for one second. Once again, I, I move to amend the previous motion in the following way, and that is by adding at the end of the motion the following words. Add the words to the end of the motion, quote, "And further, that a minimum of three bids will be received prior to awarding the contract for the work."
An amendment to the motion has been presented, which would add the following to the end of the motion, "And further, that a minimum of three bids will be received prior to awarding the contract for the work." Does any voter here to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Visconti.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. The reason I am proposing this amendment is because of the following. I attended the presentation that was conducted by the company that had submitted the bid for this work. I was told at that, at that presentation by two high-level town officials that they would only receive one quote for this work. Now I ask you, would you open, if you needed work done to the tune of $40,000, $50,000 at your home, would you open your wallet to the first and only contractor that knocked on your door? I don't think you would. If in fact, as you might hear, that more than one bid will be solicited, then, then getting three bids, if they are truly going to get three bids, then there should be no opposition to my motion to amend, because it's only, my motion only indicates what in fact you may hear is going to be done. In this particular case, a little redundancy does not hurt. I would please ask you to vote in favor of my motion to amend and subsequently the motion as amended. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Not the motion itself, but just the amendment, which would add the words, "And further, that a minimum of three bids will be received prior to awarding the contract for the work." Attorney Vellani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. We did receive just one estimate. However, we will be looking at additional companies. My intention and our intention is to get the best possible system at the best possible price for the town of Milford. So we're not limiting ourselves to this. This is just an estimate. This was designed to see what we need, what type of system would work best here. The particular system we will look at will be designed for this upper town hall, the equipment and the exact system that will work best here. So I'm not trying, and we are not trying to limit it to one vendor. By no means is that our intention. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other voter here to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Visconti.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti from Precinct 8, town meeting member. Once again, I can only tell you what I heard directly at that presentation. This is not secondhand information. This is firsthand information that I received from two high-level administrators. I will not mention names so as not to possibly embarrass anybody. But once again, if in fact we are planning on receiving at least three bids for this work, then what is the harm in approving the motion to amend, which only says exactly what the previous speaker allowed as though was going to happen? Once again, please, vote favorably on the motion to amend and subsequently the motion as amended. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Attorney Murray.
The process, as I understand it from the town administrator, was this particular vendor was taken from the state bid list. So the, the state has already specced the requirements for this type of a thing, and this vendor is on the state bid list. There's only one other vendor on the state bid list, that there's no more than two. So if this amendment passes and we're unable to get three quotes, we can't go forward with this particular project. Now, we've had discussions with the Finance Committee. They've asked us to look at the other bidder on the state list. The town administrator, the board is perfectly fine with that, and that's something that we plan on doing. But it's not like we just reached out and grabbed these people out of nowhere, took them right off the state bid list. So that's, that's how the process goes. So there'll be two that I think we're going to be deciding from, so in terms of the amendment with three, I would ask you to defeat that.
Any other voter here to be heard on the amendment to the motion? If not, the question comes upon the amendment to the motion, which is to add the following words at the end of the motion, "Further, and further, that a minimum of three bids will be received prior to awarding the contract for the work." All those in favor of the amendment to the motion manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The amendment to the motion is defeated. Does any voter here to be heard on the original motion? Yes, the voter from Precinct 6.
Five.
Five.
Hey, there's a little note here that says, "Please speak directly into the mic." Thanks. I'm currently in Precinct 5, so I don't have, and in the past, before I was a voting member, I sat in the wayback where not-voting members are allowed to sit.
I'm sorry, would you identify yourself?
Jamie Wheelock, sorry. My personal experience here is that the PA system works great when you speak into the microphone. And I think there's a solution to the "I can't hear you" problem that involves spending less than 50 grand. I actually think the pressing need that town meeting and town hall needs is a better visual aid system for projections and discussing subjects like the zoning issue over there. I would, I don't know if this is the right time to talk about, if we could get bids that come in well under the 50, and you could sneak in the visual projection system, as the language is currently written, are we not allowed to spend any money on a visual projector system?
Does any voter here to be heard on the question raised?
I guess I'm asking a person who knows the answer to my question.
You're just asking the question. We can't interrogate other members of the board. You can ask the question, if there's no response, then that's an answer in itself.
Would anyone like to help me out on this question?
Town Councilman.
The article by its terms is for audio only, not for video. When there is, when and if there's a plan to do video, which I gather there's some discussion of, it'll have to come back to this body for a vote.
Great. Well, if that was the case, I would actually urge to amend it to include visual now. I actually think the pressing need at town meeting is for enhanced visual projection and not microphoning. I don't feel that strongly enough about it to ask to amend it, but if anybody else agrees with me that this microphone and the PA system is pretty adequate as long as we speak into the microphone, and the people who don't hear it, because we're not talking into the microphone back in the back of the room, if they could raise their hand or something, then we would know that you need to actually speak into the microphone for it to work. I recommend we don't pass the 50 grand for the enhanced PA system.
Any other voter here to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. DeBartolomérez.
Mr. Moderator, once again, you know, we're trying to do the best thing here. Many of you have talked to us, you've talked to all three of us. I disagree with the previous speaker. Oftentimes, it's the, it's the equipment, it's the mechanism, it just doesn't work properly. We've been here before where many, many people have come up to us and said, "Please, try to fix that next time, because I can't hear anything." So it's the system, we've had demonstrations. We will go off a bid, of course, the people are on the, companies are on the bid list. If we can incorporate the, the video, we will, we will come back, we will work with the, with the FinCon on this, because we want a situation where you can hear it, visualize it, and it'll take care of all disabilities. And, but this is the first way to start. I was in Western Mass a couple of months ago, and I've seen what they've done, and it's tremendous. And this is the same thing that we want to try to do. So I think all these ideas are good. We're trying to, you know, make it so that all of you can hear, and it works perfectly tonight. I guess it's like when you have a, when you have a noise or a rattle in your car, you bring it to the mechanic, you can't hear, it doesn't work, it doesn't go on anymore. But tonight, it's working, other nights, it's not, and let's just do it right. We'll go off a bid, we'll come back, we'll work with the FinCon, and we'll have a system here that you'll all be proud of. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $50,000, set some to be utilized to obtain and install an audio system in the upper town hall. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion is carried. Article five. Mr. Arcuti.
Mr. Moderator, town clerk, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $18,000 to be utilized to purchase a new field tractor to replace a 1979 tractor.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $18,000 to be utilized to purchase a new field tractor to replace a 1979 tractor. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Arcuti.
This is to replace a 35-year-old tractor. It's, bottom line is, its time has come. We're spending good money after bad to keep it, to keep it up and running. This was on a part of our five-year plan, so I please ask you to vote favorably for this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard in the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article six. Chief McGlaughlin.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $25,000, set some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the police chief for the replacement of computers and related equipment and software at the police department.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $25,000, set some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the police chief for the replacement of computers and related equipment and soft, software at the police department. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other voter here to be heard? Chief McGlaughlin.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the second installment. Last town meeting, you gave us $25,000. We initially replaced the entire system over 10 years ago, and we still utilize equipment that is as old as 16 years. So it moves at a snail's pace. That said, we've tried to spread it out over four years, so in the future, you don't get a big price tag all at once, and we replace equipment incrementally. So this is to upgrade not only the equipment itself, but the backbones of it, the servers, so that we have greater memory, particularly to store video. We're now storing three years of video from all of our jail cells and that whole booking area, so that if we ever face a situation of liability, we can go back and look. So I would ask for your approval of this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator?
Selectmen DeBartolomérez.
I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by adopting a new Article 39 there relating to the regulation of voting on Milford Pond and Louisa Lake as follows.
Motion made in second, to waive the reading of the remainder if it's exactly as appears in the warrant. Is it, Selectmen DeBartolomérez? There are no changes to what you've had in the warrant that was mailed to you previously. All those in favor of waiving the reading manifest by saying aye. All those in favor of waiving the reading manifest by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion is carried. Does any vote to care to be heard on the motion? Selectman DiBattolommius.
Mr. Moderator, yes. Town meeting members, first of all, I'd like to say I want to thank you. Yes, I'm going to use the mic. We want to thank you for all your support in the past regarding the Milford Pond restoration. I want to thank you, all the members before, the FinCom, all the boards, the financial department heads that made this thing possible, and the Restoration Commission. They're very, very thankful of your support. This is something that, I guess, we're protecting our investment. The town has spent about $2 million on this project, and the majority of the money comes from the Army Corps of Engineers. The restoration project will begin very soon. Probably, you probably start seeing equipment down there, middle of November, they'll start, and they'll work until the ice forms, and then they'll wait till the spring. It'll probably take about a year and a half, two years to complete this project. This is the bylaw, like I said, it's to protect our investment. If you go through it, this bylaw is designed to do just that. General regulations and rules, it's on boat safety, life jackets, you know, sound practices to protect our residents and citizens. No discharge of waste, garbage, oil into the water. Now, you would think most people would not do that, but if you don't have regulations, it'll be posted, we'll educate people, we'll work with the schools. This is something that the Army Corps of Engineers, once they do a project with National Heritage, it's something that we have to do to protect, like I said, the investment of the town. Boating uses, you know, nothing gas-fired, large boats. It also goes into boating uses permitted, kayaks, balloons, rowboats, electric motors. The control of invasive plants and species. In most places, if a person puts a boat or a kayak, got to make sure that it's clean, that it's not full of mud, plants, and all that stuff. And it just, once again, it's wise, it's good planning. The boats have to be clean, you know, we have to remove any visible marine growth. And once again, we're trying to be reasonable here, as long as people abide by the rules. Like I said, we'll educate everyone, and these are the things that are done when the Army Corps of Engineers and National Heritage become engaged in a process, a project like we have here. We're spending a lot of money. The regulatory agencies that we had to go through, it was unbelievable. But on this particular thing, they're trying to do the right thing, so that it will last well past 50 years. The Milford Water Company, I had contact with them, they're going to be giving us about $5,000 a year, every year, to make sure that we treat it, we treat the vegetation so that the town doesn't have to do it. And this is like preventive maintenance, just like the highway survey does in different projects. Once again, we want to protect the migration of invasive species and the protection of endangered species. We have birds, we have certain turtles that we have to protect, and, you know, I think this is a project that you talk about future generations, the kids and all that. We have Louisa Lake, we have spent money on Louisa Lake, but we don't want Louisa Lake to be like Milford Pond is in 20 years. So we're doing the same thing there as far as the vegetation. Everybody's very excited, and like I said, once this project is complete, about a year and a half, two years, I think, you know, Milfordians will be very, very proud of what they've done. The monies have been well-spent, and it's been vetted very, very closely. But I really want to thank this body for, on probably three or four occasions, when you came before you, asking for help and the backing of the FinCom. So that's what this article does, it protects our investment, just makes sure that we have everything in order, and we hope that people use common sense. But if they're not using common sense, then they'll be advised and all that, and we protect, you know, the pond, so that it doesn't start deteriorating right away. So hopefully, you'll approve this. Thank you.
Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor. Any other vote to care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Abisla.
Hi, Russell Abisla, Precinct Three. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think this is a very good article, and I recommend its passage. However, I would make one amendment, which I'll read to you in a moment. This may seem picky, but I would like to amend the new article, Section Two, Regulation Two Dot Two, to read as follows. "No person shall operate a vessel between the hours of one hour after sunset and one hour before sunrise or when vision is unduly restricted by weather."
An amendment to the motion has been suggested by... To amend Two Point Two, to read as follows. "No person shall operate a vessel between the hours of one hour after sunset and one hour before sunrise or when vision is unduly restricted by weather." Discussion on the amendment.
Russ? The reason I'm suggesting this is because once we get the pond fixed up, and people do go boating and they go fishing there, as some of you people who do go fishing notice that the fishing is much better just before sunrise and just after sunset. If people start fishing, they have to get off by sunset, this gives them an extra hour to get off, maybe catch a couple of fish. I know it may be picky, but I thought it would be good for the fishermen to be able to get off the water before or after sunset.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion?
Mr. Moderator, I certainly agree with Mr. Abisla, we want him to catch fish, so I would say let's approve the amendment.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? If not, the question comes upon the amendment to the motion, which is to change Section Two Point Two to read as follows. "No person shall operate a vessel between the hours of one hour after sunset and one hour before sunrise or when vision is unduly restricted by weather." All those in favor of the amendment to the motion manifest by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? The amendment to the motion is carried. Any vote to care to be heard on the motion as amended? If not, the question comes upon the motion as amended, which is to amend the general bylaws by adopting a new Article 39 relating to the regulations of boating on Milford Pond and Louisa Lake. All those in favor manifest by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion is carried unanimously. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I motion that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning the following parcels from general residential RA district and/or neighborhood commercial CB district to office residential OR. Assessors map 49, block zero, lot 13A. Assessors map 51, block zero, lots 10 through 12, 24 through 26, 26A, 27 through 29, 31 through 33, and 35 through 44, 46 through 53, 53A, 54 through 61, 61A, 61B, 62 through 84, 84 dash two, 84 dash three, 85, 86, 89 through 92 and 94. The 75 parcels referenced herein are located along and in the vicinity of Main Street, Nelson Heights, and the intersection of Route 16 and Route 140.
Does the planning board have a report?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section Five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on September 16th, 2014, regarding the subject of Article Eight, at which time it was voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article Eight amends the zoning bylaw by rezoning 75 parcels in the vicinity of the intersection of Route 140 and 16, the Medical Center campus in Nelson Heights, to OR office residential. The planning board recommends the adoption of Article Eight as printed in the warrant.
Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Cal Jordan.
The planning board is proposing Article Eight to expand the economic development potential for the neighborhoods surrounding the Medical Center and Campus Center campus. This article amends the zoning bylaw by rezoning 75 parcels in the vicinity of the intersection of Route 140 and 16, including the medical campus in Nelson Heights, to the OR office residential zoning district. This will establish a contiguous 45 acres of the office residential district to support the revitalization of the entire neighborhood surrounding the medical campus. It will allow for the adaptive reuse of all or a portion of the larger homes in the area. In some areas where appropriate, it will encourage redevelopment to medical-related professional offices. Rezoning this area to the office residential district will not affect existing residential usage or require homeowners to make any changes to their properties, knowing it'd increase taxes. It will prevent the intrusion of unplanned commercial usage into the neighborhoods. The planning board recommends the adoption of Article Eight as printed in the warrant.
Is any other vote to care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Visconti. Oh, I'm sorry, not through...
I just wanted to show the area so that people could understand where we were. This is the hospital campus here, the back line through here is 140, 16 is here, Main Street. So we're looking at mostly the hospital campus and this side of Main Street and along the heights really would be the major changes to the residential now, with a small section of CB down at the end of the house, and the other would get changed to OR. But most of the campus you can see is the campus here and the Campus Center would be changed to the OR district. Thank you. I think that's yours. Yep.
Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti, town meeting member from Precinct Eight. Relative to this proposal, I met with many of the residents who will be affected by this zoning, rezoning. Many of them are elderly and have lived in the area for many, many years. Numerous, numerous... Many of them ask the same question, and that is, what is the impetus for this change? They are very suspicious of the motives for having this zoning change. They're concerned about more traffic and congestion in the area, which is already somewhat congested. They've lived there for years, they would like to continue to live there in exactly the same fashion, and not have their neighborhood changed for the benefit of a few who may wish to develop that area in other ways. They do not want their neighborhood ruined, and especially the character of their neighborhood. These people have lived in harmony with the hospital for many, many years. The hospital has been a great neighbor, and they would like to keep it that way, and they would like to stay there in the same manner and fashion that they are there now. Who would want the character of their neighborhood ripped out from under them to benefit a few? The hospital has never, in its history, been denied a permit for any construction or addition that they wish to do, including a helipad. And yet, they have remained great neighbors to the residential folks that live in the area that's going to be affected. There is no legitimate reason to change this zoning, only for the sake of, let's change the zoning in that area. That is not a legitimate reason. Please vote unfavorably on this motion. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, whoa gee, you hear me? Congratulations on the new sound system coming. If it's even close to this, it's going to be great. I rise to address this proposed zoning amendment from a community development and planning perspective. In this regard, let me tell you where we are. By all estimates, Milford is approximately 80% built out in both the residential and non-residential sectors. So far, we've been able to provide all of our municipal services with moderate increases in the residential tax burden and with tax receipts from our business, commercial, industrial base. However, as we look to the future, the ability to continue on this track will become ever more challenging, mainly due to the limitations in existing land zones for business, commercial, and industrial purposes. As time goes on, there will be increased pressure in the town to expand business and commercial activities into the town's core residential A districts, mainly driven by the desire to expand the business, commercial tax base and to create jobs. Prudent planning, therefore, suggests we get ahead of this real possibility by thinking outside the box. It is far better to proscribe some non-residential uses in residential areas where business or commercial proposals would likely occur, rather than having to react to proposals and corresponding zoning changes under economic and political pressures. From a long-term planning perspective, the area around the Milford Hospital is a prime location to expand our business base. The Milford Hospital is a significant economic engine for the town. Not only does it provide the community with outstanding health services, it creates jobs. The last time I checked, it was the highest employer in the town of Milford. In addition, the hospital would be a magnet for attracting professionals and businesses that would augment their healthcare services. One approach to expanding the business space is offered by the office residential zoning district, the first of which was approved by the June 14, 2010 town meeting for the area near Congress Street between West Exchange Streets and Water Street. The permitted uses in that amendment and this proposed amendment are either pre-existing uses or were selected to be low to moderate impact to the underlying residential uses. They are worth repeating, so you can judge for yourself if they meet the low to moderate impact test. The Milford Hospital has always been a permitted use in the residential A zoning and is therefore retained as a permitted use in this proposed OR amendment. Permitted uses that were part of the June 10, 2010 amendment are four institutional uses, a club or lodge, a commercial school, adult daycare facility, and a public utility with a service area. Two commercial uses, boarding or rooming house and funeral home. And two business uses, business or professional offices and professional buildings. This proposed amendment adds one institutional use, obviously the existing hospital, one business use, a food service as secondary use, for example, the cafeteria at the hospital would be covered under that. One other principal use, a heli-stop, which is permitted only as an accessory use to the hospital and exists there now. And only one accessory use, one large solar energy system, again, only as an accessory use, not as a standalone solar farm. It should be noted that the only two commercial uses introduced in the June 210, 2010 amendment were boarding or rooming house and funeral home. This proposed amendment does not add any other commercial uses. Rezoning that there... Recognizing that there is no perfect solution to incorporating some non-residential uses into residential areas while maintaining what residents believe to be the character of their neighborhood, the necessary provisions and safeguards have been incorporated in the bylaw to assure neighborhood interests and concerns are taken into consideration. For example, all of the above uses except club or lodge and commercial schools require a special permit from either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. In addition, all of the above uses except public utility with service area and the existing heli-stop require a site plan review by the planning board, and building heights and number of stories are also subject to planning board approval. In my experience with the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, both in observation and in service to the planning board for five and a half years as the town planner, is that they have consistently demonstrated their sensitivity to citizens' concerns. They make every effort to accommodate those concerns in site plan design and in the special permit terms and conditions. permit terms and conditions. I have every reason and confidence that they will continue to do so as business development takes place in this O.R. District. In conclusion, it is my opinion that establishing an office residential zone in this area has the following attributes: It encourages business development, thereby creating jobs, and increases the business tax base. The permitted uses are low to moderate impact to the underlying residential uses. All of the residential A uses and lot dimension requirements remain unchanged. Safeguards are in place to assure residents' interests are considered and accommodated. It provides dual-use opportunities for existing and new residents, and properties in the area could potentially be sold at a premium by virtue of their business potential. For all of these reasons, I favor this proposed amendment and encourage you to do so also.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Wheelock?
I am opposed to the current scope of this article as it's written. I would, I don't think we need to pass this much of the zoning redistricting change to the broad area that it is, and if anybody else also was in support of scaling back it, that would be fine with me, but specifically, I want to offer an amendment that will put Casey Pool back in the residential section, in other words, excluding Casey Pool from the new Office Residential zoning change. I don't see any advantage to taking an active recreation place that's owned by the state and changing the zoning of it to be Office Residential in the future. The state has already offered us that property, the town declined it, which I understand is expensive to run a pool, so maybe they didn't think that was a good idea, but I'd like to propose amendment to carve, to keep Casey Pool out of Article eight, if nobody actually wants to skip it altogether.
Well, the process is, you've got to present an amendment to the motion. Do you have that amendment to the motion in writing?
I don't have it in writing. Who wants to write it for me, or who wants to work it with me?
As I've mentioned in the past, I'm available prior to any town meeting to assist any town meeting member in any article that's going to be debated by this meeting.
Great.
You can call my office, you can call my home.
I think we can write-
I'd be glad to go over with you, and you could, we could spell out and present the amendment. We can't do this-
I think we can do it.
-you've had plenty of time, and you've thought about this, so all you have to do is to identify the parcels and present that amendment to the motion. I think it's unfair to the members-
I think-
-come up here and ask for other help, so if you don't have them, I'll give you, maybe other people want to speak, they only have a chance to decide what particular parcels Casey Pool is located in, and then you can present that amendment to the motion in writing. Otherwise-
Yes, I can do that, that's fine.
Please sit down, if you're prepared. Any other remarks you want to make?
No, that's okay.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Visconti. Good. Well, why don't you present it then, Mr. Visconti?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti, town meeting member from Precinct Eight. I move to carve out the Casey Pool from the previous motion.
Well, can you read the amendment to the motion? That, it's got to be more specific than the Casey Pool. Can we identify, because the motion presents certain lots according to the assessors' maps. Can someone help out by identifying those parcels-
I'm afraid I don't have the assessors' map. I was trying to help out the gentleman who initially presented the motion.
I think it's too vague an amendment.
With all due respect, Mr. Moderator, I think we all know the lot that contains the Casey Pool, so I'm not certain that we really need the lot number and, but I will comply with your request.
I mean, you've obviously thought about this, and you have plenty of time to research it and come up with the appropriate amendment to the motion. To come up here and to take additional time-
On the contrary, Mr. Moderator, I have not thought about it. I'm only reacting to the gentleman's request for some assistance in helping out with his amendment to the motion.
All right. Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion itself?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Wheel, well, gentleman in the back. Mr. Pine. Soon to be, I won't spill the beans, Mr. Pine.
John Pine, twelve Dewey Circle. Good evening. It's a longer walk from the back of the hall, I guess, but I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments regarding the pros and cons of this particular article. There's probably no one in this hall that hasn't benefited directly or indirectly, relatives or family or friends, that have had or been provided services by the Milford Medical Community, the hospital specifically, but the medical community. It's more or less the flagship, flagship of Milford right now, and I believe it's the highest, biggest employer in the town of Milford. It's not specifically about the hospital itself and what it provides, but the attraction to very, very prominent medical people that we've seen come to town. I, for one, have personally benefited it. I don't mean to influence your vote, but if it wasn't for them, I probably would not be here this evening. And I think that that's a very key thing to understand, that this community and the fact that the Planning Board is not just reacting to or have to do something on a need-to basis, they're planning it out, they're supporting it, they're planning it and making sure that things are done in a proper way, that everything is being done according. The one thing that we didn't hear in this article that I think is good, we're not talking about possible eminent domain or anything being changed drastically by individual residences. Life should and could go on as it is right now without interruption. It's the future that's being planned right now that we're trying to take a proactive approach, and I think it's great that the town is showing that type of support to the medical community in Milford to continue to attract and provide the kind of services that we've all really come to expect and have been getting. So I very strongly urge the town meeting members to support this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Wheelock?
Jamie Wheelock, Precinct Five, and because of the unwillingness of the moderator to go with the flow and allow a vaguely worded amendment that, in general, is pretty clear, or the lack of willingness of anyone else who might be knowledgeable about the exact lot that I'm referencing legal description-wise, I would say, let's keep in mind that there's another town meeting, regularly scheduled town meeting, coming up soon enough, that I believe we should table this motion until this specific amendment is presented to the satisfaction of the moderator. I'm motioning that we table the article, please.
Making a motion to table, which would delay it till the, everything has to be taken off the table at the end of the meeting, so, any other vote to care to be heard on the motion to table? If not, the question comes upon the motion to table the article. All those in favor of tabling Article eight manifest by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion's defeated. Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion? If not, the question comes on the motion, since it's an amendment to our zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All, said, all those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one.
Eleven in favor, two opposed.
Precinct one reports eleven in favor, two opposed. Precinct two.
Twelve in favor, none opposed.
Precinct two, twelve in favor, none opposed. Precinct three.
Seventeen in favor, three opposed.
Precinct three, seventeen in favor, three opposed. Precinct four.
Thirteen in favor, two opposed.
Precinct four, thirteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct five.
Seventeen in favor, four opposed.
Precinct five, thirteen in favor, four, I'm sorry, seventeen?
Seventeen in favor.
Seventeen in favor, four opposed. Precinct six.
Thirteen in favor, five opposed.
Precinct six, thirteen in favor, five opposed. Precinct seven.
Twenty in favor, none opposed.
Twenty in favor, none opposed. Precinct eight.
Ten in favor, one opposed.
I'm sorry, how many in favor?
Ten in favor, one opposed.
Ten in favor, one opposed. At large?
Eleven in favor, none opposed.
At large, eleven in favor, none opposed. One hundred twenty-four having voted in the affirmative, seventeen in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired, and the motion is carried. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money, the amount of thirty thousand dollars, set some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of installing a new generator at the Highway Department.
Motion made, and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, set some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of installing a new generator at the Highway Department. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Scott?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Highway Department has been utilizing a generator that was a hand-me-down from the police station fifteen years ago. It's only capable of running the lights, the fuel pumps, and some minor electrical things. So two years ago, we applied for a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant to install a new generator at the Highway Department. Our application was accepted over the summer, and we were awarded seventy-five thousand dollars towards it. The new generator will be fully functional and capable of operating all our essential needs, our fuel pumps, mechanic bays, lights, garage, everything that we need electricity for. The thirty thousand dollars will be spent for design in the town share of twenty-five percent. I ask for your support.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those who manifest by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion's carried unanimously. Article ten. Mr. Caljon.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend Section three point four parking requirements of the zoning bylaw relating to shared parking by deleting Section three point four point one B three, shared parking, and adopting in lieu thereof the following new Section three point four point one B three. Three point four point one B three, shared parking, notwithstanding any other parking requirements set forth in this article for individual land usage. When any land or building is used for three or more distinguishable purposes, the minimum total number of on-site, off-street parking spaces required to serve the combination of all uses may be reduced as follows, provided that the Planning Board first issues a special permit for such reduction. Three through five separate uses, ten percent reduction. Six or more separate usages, twenty percent reduction.
Motion made, and second the town vote to amend Section three point four parking requirements of the zoning bylaw relating to shared parking by deleting Section three point four point one B three, shared parking, and adopting in lieu thereof the following new Section three point four point one B three. Three point four point one B three, shared parking, notwithstanding any other parking requirements set forth in this article for individual land uses. When any land or building is used for three or more distinguishable purposes, the minimum total number of on-site, off-street parking spaces required to serve the combination of all uses may be reduced as follows, provided that the Planning Board first issues a special permit for such reduction. Three through five separate uses, a ten percent reduction. Six plus separate uses, a twenty percent reduction. Does the Planning Board have a report?
Yes, I do. Pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen regarding the subject of Article ten, at which time it was voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article ten amends the zoning bylaw by establishing new ratios for shared parking situations in multi-use developments. The Planning Board recommends the adoption of Article ten as printed in the warrant.
Is there any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Caljon.
Planning Board is proposing Article ten to update certain parking calculations in the zoning bylaw. Article ten amends the shared parking section of the zoning bylaw by providing a new ratio for required parking in certain developments that are characterized by multiple principal usage. The reduction would only be available via special permit from the Planning Board, and the expectation is that this review would primarily be occurring concurrently with site plan review for redevelopment proposals. The reductions proposed reflect the likely usage overlap that occurs when multiple usages are located within the same plaza or similar types of unified development. The current ratio being replaced only focuses on the various hours of operation, which obviously change quite often as usages change within the development. The Planning Board recommends your adoption of Article ten as printed in the warrant.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, which is an amendment to the zoning bylaw that requires a two-thirds vote. No one has spoken opposition. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor manifest by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? All those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one.
Eleven in favor, one opposed.
Precinct one reports eleven in favor, one opposed. Precinct two.
Eleven in favor, one opposed.
Precinct two reports eleven in favor, one opposed. Precinct three.
Nineteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct three reports nineteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct four.
Fourteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct four, fourteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct five.
Twenty in favor, none opposed.
Precinct five, twenty in favor, none opposed. Precinct six.
Nineteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct six, nineteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct seven.
Twenty in favor, none opposed.
Precinct seven, twenty in favor, none opposed. Precinct eight.
Ten in favor, one opposed.
Precinct eight, ten in favor, none opposed. At large?
Thirteen in favor, none opposed.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed. One hundred thirty-seven having voted in the affirmative, three in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired, and the motion is carried. Article, Article eleven. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, set some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectment for the purpose of a detailed Phase Two dam inspection and evaluation report of the Louisa Lake Dam, to include all field work, to include all field work, structural analysis, reporting, permitting, cost estimating, bidding, and construction administration and inspection of repairs to the dam, the spillway, the diversion structure, and the two dikes, and any other action required by the Office of Dam Safety or necessary thereto to complete Phase Two dam inspection.
Motion made, and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, set some to center under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectment for the purpose of a detailed Phase Two dam inspection and evaluation report of the Louisa Lake Dam, to include all field work, structural analysis, reporting, permitting-
reporting, permitting, cost estimating, bidding, and construction administration, inspection of repairs to the dam, the spillway, the diversion structure, and the two dykes, and any other action required by the Office of Dam Safety are necessary thereto to complete the Phase Two dam inspection. Finance committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other vote to carry to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Selectman DeBartolomeis.
Town meeting members, the dam safety organization has issued a certificate of non-compliance and dam safety order for the town, for Louisa Lake Dam, and this is being mandated by the dam safety department. As part of the order, the town must conduct a Phase Two dam inspection and investigation of the dam to evaluate structural integrity and spillway hydraulic adequacy of the dam, and to develop and implement a plan to bring the dam into compliance with dam safety regulations. If you approve the monies tonight, a hundred thousand dollars, we'll have a design, permitting, scope of work, and bid documents. That'll be done over the next three or four months, and then we'll come back to this body for future dollars for construction. This is something, we've kept the, we've kept the neighbors in the area abreast of what we're doing, the town engineer and the Board of Selectmen, so they know what's happening, and they appreciate that, because I guess you can, you can get very scared when you're talking about dams not being safe. The, in the past, the highway surveyor has taken a look at it, he's done some things to help out, but then when the, when this organization came by and did the initial inspection, there were things that were wrong that had to be fixed. As you know, there are many, many dams and bridges that have to be repaired throughout the Commonwealth. So, we tried to apply for a hundred thousand dollar grant, we didn't receive the grant, but this is necessary, so we want to hire an engineer to do all that work. He'll bring it back to us, we'll work with the FinCom, and then at a late, late of town meeting, probably either in May or maybe at a special, we'll be coming back to you for an amount of monies to do the repairs as required by the, by the engineer. Thank you.
Any other vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twelve. Town Councilman Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Park Commissioners, to be utilized for tree-related services at the North Purchase Cemetery.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Park Commissioners to be utilized for tree-related services at the North Purchase Cemetery. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to carry to be heard, Town Councilman Moody?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, as you may be aware, the town owns what's referred to as the North Purchase Cemetery, a small cemetery, obviously off of Purchase Street. For many, many years, it was maintained through a perpetual care fund and through the services of some volunteers who lived in the area. The fund ran out, and the town now has to take responsibility for it. The sponsor of this article has become a volunteer in undertaking that effort, and there's some trees that need significant work. She worked with the finance committee, and they arrived at this number of twenty-five fifty that'll take care of that, and as you see from the article, the money will actually be spent by the Board of Park Commissioners and take care of these trees, and so they won't be a danger to the public in the cemetery. Thank you.
Any other vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirteen. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, said sum to be expended to complete the second floor at the Ruth Ann Bleakney Senior Center.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, said sum to be expended to complete the second floor at the Ruth Ann Bleakney Senior Center. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to carry to be heard, Attorney Murray?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, when the senior center was completed in two thousand and four, there were four unfinished rooms on the second floor. Coming from the two-room schoolhouse on Winter Street, it was difficult to envision the future uses of the senior center, but everyone was certainly optimistic that it would get used widely by seniors for a number of different programs. That, in fact, has been the case over the last ten years. Right now, the senior center director reports to us that they have fifteen fitness classes per week, ranging from five to twenty-five participants per session. They've juggled rooms over the years trying to accommodate these fitness classes. Currently, they're using a room that's a little too small for this type of activity, so many of the classes are held in the Milford Rooms, which, if you've been down there, you know that's the primary room for luncheons, meetings, functions, and by relegating the fitness to that area, we're restricting the functions that they can have, and we are also restricting the fitness classes, because one has to give for the other. And in addition, it's a constant setup for the one maintenance person that we have down there, putting in equipment, taking out equipment, setting up tables. So, the thought from the council on aging and the senior center director was to target one of the unfinished rooms upstairs. Two of the rooms, by the way, have been refinished over the years and are used for other purposes. Kind of an interesting note, the last town census indicates that thirty percent of the town's population is considered elderly, but in five years, that number's expected to rise to thirty-nine percent. The fitness program is a priority at the senior center, and seniors, I think, sometimes it can be intimidating for folks to go to a commercial gym, depending on what you have to wear, and, you know, how you perform, and what goes on, and people are yelling, lifting weights, and all kinds of crazy things. The senior center is different, it's a very sensitive staff, it's encouraging participation, and folks can go however they like to go and do whatever they want to do, at whatever speed they feel comfortable at. And it's, it's a, it's a very important program, I think, for the elderly of our community, and we're fortunate that we've got an excellent senior center and an excellent staff that is very understanding and accommodating to the seniors of our community. So, I would ask for your support on this article.
Any other vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fourteen. Mr. Calijohni.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw related to use, uses allowed within the O.R. Office Residential Zoning District as noted here and after, by adding in-
Motion made and second that we waive the reading of the details of the motion if it's exactly as appears in the warrant, that it is exactly as appears in the warrant. Any vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried. Does the planning board have a report?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter forty-eight, section five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen regarding the subject of Article fourteen, at which time it was voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article fourteen amends the zoning bylaw by adding hospitals and other usages to the O.R. Office Residential category in the use schedule. The planning board recommends the adoption of Article fourteen is printed in the warrant.
Is there any other vote to carry to be heard, Mr. Calijohni?
The planning board is proposing Article fourteen to update the list of allowable usages in the Office Residential Zoning District. This amendment will expand the range of usage to include hospital usage as permitted, as a permitted use, and secondary food service and solar energy system usages as special permit usage. The heli-stop use will only be permitted as an accessory use to the hospital. This article correlates with the prior rezoning proposal of Article eight, that will place the Medical Center campus in adjacent neighborhoods in the O.R. District. The amendment will also adjust non-residential height requirements in the O.R. Zone to possibly exceed the current two-story limit, but only by planning board's special permit after a public hearing is conducted on the matter. The planning board recommends your adoption of Article fourteen as printed in the warrant.
Any other vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, which is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, and therefore requires a two-thirds vote. I will take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fifteen. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million dollars, and also to transfer the additional sum of one million dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said total sum of three million dollars to be utilized to reduce the amount of money authorized to be borrowed under Article twenty-four of the May nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting for the renovation of the Milford Youth Center and facilities, said sum further to be utilized together with funds appropriated for all of the purposes as authorized under said Article twenty-four.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million dollars, and also to transfer the additional sum of one million dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said total sum of three million dollars to be utilized to reduce the amount of money authorized to be borrowed under Article twenty-four of the May nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting for the renovation of the Milford Youth Center and facilities, said sum further to be utilized together with funds appropriated for all of the purposes as authorized under said Article twenty-four. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to carry to be heard, Attorney Murray?
Ladies and gentlemen, as the chairman of the finance committee alluded to prior to this meeting, what this article simply achieves is paying down the cost of the youth center now so as to not borrow it and pay interest on top of the principal. It was recommended to us through our financial people, the town accountant, the town treasurer, and estimates show that by doing this, we're saving the town interest costs somewhere between one point three and one point four million dollars.
Any other vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article sixteen. Town Councilman Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, losing my voice, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized for all purposes related to acquisition of interests in real estate needed for the purpose of replacing two sections of the Godfrey Brook culvert, one section between Congress Terrace and Westbrook Street, and the second section on Main Street. And further, that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, take by eminent domain, or otherwise acquire the rights and land, being permanent and/or temporary easements necessary for the above project.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized for all purposes related to the acquisition of interests in real estate needed for the purpose of replacing two sections of the Godfrey Brook culvert, one section between Congress Terrace and Westbrook Street, and the second section on Main Street. And further, that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, take by eminent domain, or otherwise acquire the rights and land, being permanent and/or temporary easements necessary for the above project. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to carry to be heard, Town Councilman Moody?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, if you look at the article you saw in the warrant, it had a much greater scope. The original thought of the highway surveyor and the selectmen was to come forward for the construction monies for the project, but in working with the finance committee, they saw a need to do further planning on this, so the article does not propose the construction money right now. That, again, is going to undertake further planning and further estimating, and will probably come forward at the annual town meeting. But so that the matter can move along, this will just be the money that would be needed to continue with the planning that's focused on the taking of the necessary permanent and temporary easements that'll make the construction possible as we go along. So, again, it's a more limited scope. Thank you.
Is there any other vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented with, which authorizes the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, take by eminent domain, thus requiring a two-thirds vote. Since no one has spoken in opposition, I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seventeen. Selectman Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town votes, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money for the amount of forty thousand dollars, said sum to be used to perform an assessment on Middle School East Building, and of said building's suitable, suitability to support other uses for occupancy.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of forty thousand dollars, said sum to be used to perform an assessment of the Middle School East Building and of said building's suitability to support other use, uses for occupancy. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to carry to be heard, Selectman Buckley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As town meeting members may recall, the, the funds allocated for Woodland Schools' expansion and the new building will create a situation where this building would very likely become surplus, given that, and not having a continued use for the eighth grade and the grade configuration changes in our long-range plans. The article seeks to appropriate forty thousand dollars for the assessment of Middle School East Building and suitability for future uses. What we need to do is get detailed data on its structure, ventilation system, electrical systems, and most of the major subsystems within that building. Appropriation by this town meeting for forty thousand dollars would better allow this committee that's been formed to evaluate the potential uses for this building as it comes offline, and in preparation for that in two years when Woodland School is completed. I'd urge you to support this article. Thank you very much, town meeting members.
Any other vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eighteen. A motion has been made and second that we pass over Article eighteen. A motion to pass over is debatable, requires a majority vote. Does any vote to carry to be heard in the motion to pass over? It's an attempt to take no action on the article as inserted in the warrant. Any vote to carry to be heard in the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article eighteen, eighteen, right? All those in favor will manifest by saying aye, opposed no. Motion to pass over is carried. Article nineteen. Mr. Chris Fooley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting member, members, I move that the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway surveyor for the purpose of replacing an existing truck with a new truck for plowing, sanding, and road maintenance purposes.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway surveyor for the purpose of replacing an existing truck with a new truck for plowing, sanding, and road maintenance purposes. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to carry to be heard? Mr. Chris Fooley?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if, if approved, the new truck will be replacing a nineteen eighty-eight International Dump Truck. The truck is in need of costly repairs, including electrical, transmission problems, and a lot of rust. Repairs will be cost prohibitive to perform due to the age of the truck and life expectancy of the truck. It is vital that we replace this truck for the purpose of snow plowing, sanding, and everyday maintenance of streets and sidewalks. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to carry to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye, those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty. Yes. Is it Catherine Ostriani?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Kate Mastriani, Chair, Board of Trustees, Milford Town Library. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $20,000, said sum to be spent for the purpose of upgrading the Milford Town Library's electric grid and data access points and security cameras.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $20,000, said sum to be spent for the purpose of upgrading the Milford Town Library's electric grid slash data access points and security cameras. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Catherine?
With the increase in the number of library clients bringing their own devices, laptops, and tablets to use at the library, there's a shortage of conveniently located electrical outlets. The upgrade would increase the number of outlets and data access points and allow the library to place them as needed. I'd urge your support.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty-One.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $136,000, said sum to be utilized to replace heating units and to renovate and upgrade the boiler room in the Milford Town Hall.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $136,000, said sum to be utilized to replace heating units and to renovate and upgrade the boiler room in the Milford Town Hall. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town heat pump system was installed in 1986 and is beyond its useful life. We've needed to replace three of the units within the past year with two more failing. The article seeks to replace the existing units with the new higher-efficiency units. In addition to energy savings, there will also be savings on ongoing maintenance that the town has incurred over time. This article also seeks funds to renovate and upgrade the boiler room. The boiler room is not functioning properly, is in need of repair. The work will result in a healthier workspace for the Town Hall employees and visitors and also result in energy savings. The total amount requested in this article is $136,000, and I'd urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $69,492.97, and also transfer the sum of money of $127,928 from these funds voted under Article Seventeen of the October 2010 Special Town Meeting for the Town Hall windows, and $66,579.03 from the funds voted under Article Thirteen Annual Town Meeting for the Town Hall roof, said sum of $264,000, to be utilized to install lead copper gutters, downspouts, roof edge aprons, valleys, re-flashing around the tower base, snow guards, and snow melt system over the entrances to the Milford Town Hall.
A motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $69,492.97, and also transfer the sum of $127,928 from those funds voted under Article Seventeen of the October 2010 Special Town Meeting for Town Hall windows, and $66,579.03 from those funds voted under Article Thirteen Annual Town Meeting for the Town Hall roof, said total sum of $264,000, to be utilized to install lead copper gutters, downspouts, roof edge aprons, valleys, re-flashing around the tower base, snow guards, and snow melt systems over the entrances at the Milford Town Hall. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Selectman Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. As some of you may recall, we recently replaced the roof on the Town Hall. This was intended, much of this work was intended to be done then, but as is sometimes the case when we go out to bid, the bids don't always work in our favor, and costs are higher, so we have to scale back the project, do the roof. What we're doing is cleaning up accounts from that roof account, or cleaning up the funds available, the remaining funds, and also the window work that was done here, pulling together those accounts and appropriating additional money to do the roof and gutters. In recent history, we've had to remove some large icicles that were hanging over the entrances in the interest of the Town Hall employees' safety and the citizens of Milford who are coming in and out of the building. So, it's going to, the intention is to prevent water and snow runoff on the roof as well as prevent buildup of the large icicles. The article will also request a transfer from the roof account and the window account. The cost of this project is $264,000 net total. However, the transfers, with the transfers, the total new funds will be $69,492.97, and I'd urge your support. Thank you very much.
Is any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty-Three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $10,000, said sum to be added to the Town Accountant Personal Services Budget Account Number 135-5110, as voted under Article Four of the May Nineteenth, Two Thousand and Fourteen Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $10,000, said sum to be added to the Town Accountant Personal Services Budget Account Number 135-5110, as voted under Article Four of the May Nineteenth, Two Thousand and Fourteen Annual Town Meeting. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. This is to cover salary contractual obligations in the Town Accountant's office.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty-Four.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning the following parcels from General Residential RA District to Neighborhood Commercial CB District, Assessors Map Forty-Eight, Block Zero, Lots 261, 727, and 728, Assessors Map Fifty-Two, Block Zero, Lots 268, 298, and 319, and by rezoning the balance of the following parcels not already entirely within the CB District from General Residential RA District to Neighborhood Commercial CB District, Assessors Map Forty-Eight, Block Zero, Lots 197, 198, 199, 200, 216, 217, 222, 260, 260A, and 262, and Assessors Map Fifty-Two, Block Zero, Lots 269, 296, 297, 322 through 328, 343, 350, 351, 360, 361, and 367. The thirty-one parcels or portions thereof referenced herein are located along and in the vicinity of Main Street between Water Street and Orange Street.
Motion has been made and second the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning the following parcels from General Residential RA District to Neighborhood Commercial CB District, and the remainder of the motion is exactly as appears in your warrant. Does any vote to care, or does Planning Board have a report?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on September sixteenth, Two Thousand and Fourteen regarding the subject of Article Twenty-Four, at which time was voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to Town Meeting. Article Twenty-Four amends the zoning bylaw by making adjustments to the zoning boundary for the CB Neighborhood Commercial District on Main Street between Water and Orange Streets. The Planning Board recommends the adoption of Article Twenty-Four as printed in the warrant.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Calagione.
The Planning Board is proposing Article Twenty-Four to conform zoning district boundaries to property lines in certain areas along Main Street between Water and Orange Streets. Article Twenty-Four amends the zoning bylaw by rezoning portions of the listed properties to conform the district boundaries for the CB Neighborhood Commercial Zone in this area to align with rear property lines wherever possible. Currently, the district boundary is defined only by offset dimensions from Main Street, resulting in many lots needlessly being placed in two entirely different zones. This article will include entire parcels in the CB Zone if they are now in split zoning. The Planning Board recommends your adoption of Article Twenty-Four as printed in the warrant.
Any vote to care, any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, which is an amendment to our zoning bylaw. It requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion as presented manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty-Five.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate, excuse me, a sum of money in the amount of $15,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Library Trustees for new computer workstations, chairs, and related fixtures for use with upgraded electrical or data systems.
Motion made and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $15,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Library Trustees for new computer workstations, chairs, and related fixtures for use with upgraded electrical or data systems. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Catherine?
I think it's fairly self-explanatory. If you have any questions.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty-Six. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from Account Number 192-5300, general expenses as appropriated at the May Twenty-Fourteen Annual Town Meeting under Article Four, said sum to be utilized by the Milford Youth Commission for expense purposes related to the relocation of Youth Commission facilities during the course of reconstruction of the former Milford Armory property.
Motion made and second the town vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from Account Number 192-5300, general expenses as appropriated at the May Twenty-Fourteen Annual Town Meeting under Article Four, said sum to be utilized by the Milford Youth Commission for expense purposes related to the relocation of Youth Commission facilities during the course of reconstruction of the former Milford Armory property. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Attorney Murray?
Ladies and gentlemen, as the article indicates, essentially, what's being done is a transfer from a general town account to this specific article to allow the youth center to have access to these funds for this one year while they're relocated to the rental property. They're going to be responsible for rent, utilities, and other expenses. It's money that was otherwise allocated for the operation of the Armory, which this particular year will be under the jurisdiction of a contractor, and the contractor will be paying for the electricity, heat, et cetera.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty-Seven.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee to expend any unused funds from those funds appropriated under Article Twenty-Eight of the May Nineteenth, Two Thousand and Fourteen Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of installing pedestrian push buttons on existing flashing beacon signals on all trail road crossings and for other crossing improvements as may be required.
Motion made and second the town vote to authorize the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee to expend any unused funds from those funds appropriated under Article Twenty-Eight of the May Nineteenth, Two Thousand and Fourteen Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of installing pedestrian push buttons or existing flashing beacon signals on all trail road crossings and for other crossing improvements as may be required. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator. I am pleased to report that the Milford Upper Charles Trail Project is finally nearing completion. The Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee and the Friends of the Trail invite all of you and those listening at home to the final phase ribbon-cutting ceremony this Saturday, October twenty-fifth, at ten a.m. on Veterans Memorial Drive at the rear of Hannaford Supermarket. There are ribbon-cutting flyers at the table. You, if you haven't taken one, please do so on your way out. Thank you for the time for that plug. As you can see from the chart that was on your seat, you should have this chart on your seat, the financial investment in the trail project to date is nearly six and a half million dollars. This does not include the work being done by Eastland Partners at an estimated value of $917,000 at no cost to the town. Also of note is that the federal and state programs funded ninety-one percent of the project, and the town's contribution of nine percent is below the ten percent maximum goal set by the Trail Committee over sixteen years ago. Currently, there is $48,000 remaining in two accounts. Expenditure of these funds will focus on improving safety, reducing routine maintenance, and adding some handicapped accessibility features. $4,000 is in the Hayward Street Flashing Beacon account, which is the subject of this article, and $44,000 is in the Trail Capital Project account, which is the subject of Article Twenty-Eight. If this article is approved, the $4,000 will be primarily spent to improve safety at the six road crossings by installing pedestrian push buttons on the six flashing beacon poles that currently do not have them, and to assess signage at all the road crossings and install additional signs as may be required. Since the remaining funds are restricted to the Hayward Street light, your authorization is required to spend the remaining funds for work in other areas. I urge you to vote favorably on this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty-Eight. Mr. Moderator.
I move the town vote to authorize the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee to expend the remaining balance in the Capital Project Fund 4033-5000-5840 for the purpose of preparing a Phase Three as-built plan and for trail improvements, which may include but not be limited to bank stabilization, erosion control, drainage, and handicapped accessibility enhancements.
Motion made and second the town vote to authorize the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee to expend the remaining balance in the Capital Project Fund 4033-5000-5840 for the purpose of preparing a Phase Three as-built plan and for trail improvements, which may include but not be limited to bank stabilization, erosion control, drainage, and handicapped accessibility enhancements. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Delusio.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, as I previously stated, there is $44,000 in the Trail Capital Project account that is restricted to Phase Two trail work. However, there are a number of items that involve work in all three phases that need to be addressed. The first item is to prepare an as-built plan for the new section, Phase Three. The first item is to prepare an as-built plan for the new section Phase Three. Due to unforeseen conditions underground, substantial changes from the original design were made. High-water table and ledge at the Hayward Street to Veterans Memorial Drive segment resulted in significant grade changes in realignment, which affected slope, slope treatment, and shoulder widths. In addition, a sidewalk was added on Hayward Street between Parkhurst and Cook Street. It was also decided to determine the types and locations of signage and stockade fencing locations during the construction phase, and was therefore not included in the original design plan. An as-built plan is therefore necessary to document the Phase Three trail as it exists for future reference by town departments. The second area of work involves work on Phases One and Two. Now that we have had several years of trail use in all weather conditions and all uses, some issues have been identified that need to be addressed before we bring this project to a close. The work will focus on improvements to reduce routine maintenance, improve safety, and enhance handicapped accessibility features. Some examples under consideration are bank stabilization along the Louisa Lake segment to control erosion and siltation on the trail, installation of barriers to discourage bikers from riding on the bankings because this practice is a safety issue and exacerbates erosion. Drainage improvements need to be made in several spots. Eliminating siltation from the Town Forest gravel road washing onto the trail during heavy rains will be addressed, and adding paved pads to some of the granite benches for handicapped accessibility, and adding some tactile features for the vision impaired. Since the remaining funds are restricted to Phase Two, your authorization is required to spend this forty-four thousand dollars for work on all three phases. I urge you to vote favorably on this article.
Any other vote again to be heard?
Moderator.
Attorney Heller.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, obviously I support this article, but I wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank Mr. D'Elusio and the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee for their many years of dedicated service and for their bringing to the town of Milford a resource that we should all be very proud of. So that's, that's all. I just wanted to acknowledge, I want, I think this body should acknowledge, the fine continuing work that that committee has done.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-nine. Mark Nelson?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, Mark Nelson, Precinct Seven. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars, said sum to be utilized to rehabilitate and upgrade various systems in the areas within both Milford Fire Stations.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars, said sum to be utilized to rehabilitate and upgrade various systems in the areas within both Milford Fire Stations. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote again to be heard? Mr. Nelson?
The Fire Department is seeking this funding to replace various floor coverings, windows, an air conditioning unit, and some cabinets. This will also fund an assessment of the training building by a structural engineer, and we hope for your support in this article.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty.
Mr. Moderator, we wish to pass over Article thirty.
Motion made in second, we pass over Article thirty, which is an attempt, a motion to pass over, an attempt to take no action on the article as inserted in the warrant. Does any vote again to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article thirty. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion to pass over Article thirty is carried. Article thirty-one. Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to replace the UHF dispatch radio repeater at the Highland Street Tower Site.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to replace the UHF dispatch radio repeater at the Highland Street Tower Site. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote again to be heard? Mr. Nelson?
The Fire Department is seeking this funding to replace a vital part of our radio system at the recommendation of our vendor. The repeater will be equipped with a battery backup in case of power loss, and we hope for your support in this article.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-two. Town Councilman Moody.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of subsection four D and one-half of section twenty of chapter thirty-two of the General Laws, through which acceptance, the Milford Retirement Board may compensate the Town Accountant for services in an amount of not less than two hundred dollars, no more than three thousand dollars per year.
Motion made in second of the town vote to accept the provisions of subsection four D, one-half of section twenty of chapter thirty-two of the General Laws, through which acceptance of the Milford Retirement Board may compensate the Town Accountant for services in an amount of not less than two hundred dollars, no more than three thousand dollars per year. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote again to be heard? Town Councilman Moody?
Ladies and gentlemen, through another section of the same statute, which is the statute governing retirement, the Town Accountant's compensation has been set, actually for about the past thirty years, at fifteen hundred dollars. This is a provision put in by the legislature some time ago for local acceptance whereby cities and towns, if they accept it, can allow the retirement board to compensate a Town Accountant for, as it says, not more than three thousand dollars, up to and not more than three thousand dollars. And the Milford Retirement Board, based upon the work that they see being done, the magnitude of their investments, and the importance of it, has deemed it appropriate to seek your acceptance on that, and I'm presenting this on their behalf. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-three. Mr. Shane.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move town vote to raise and appropriate sum of money in the amount of one million, seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Of said sum, one million, to be added to the town stabilization account established on General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B, and seven, and seven-hundred-and-forty thousand to be transferred to the Capital Project stabilization account.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one million, seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Of said sum, one million, to be added to the town stabilization account established under General Laws, Chapter forty-five B, and seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars to be transferred to the Capital Project stabilization account. Finance Committee recommendation is what, Mr. Shane?
Favorable.
Okay. Mr. Shane?
Thank you. What the hell? We talked about this at the beginning of the meeting. The million dollars will be added to the long-term debt stabilization account to help reduce the impact on, on the thirty-six million dollar school, and seven-hundred-and-forty thousand to the short-term capital account to prepare us for future use, two-hundred thousand of which we've been put aside, and we promised the Parks Department we'd put aside because they'll be coming forward with a two-million-dollar field in a couple of years, so we're starting now. I urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, which is adding to the stabilization fund, and therefore requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency account a sum of money in the amount of one million, four hundred thousand dollars to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency account a sum of money in the amount of one million, four hundred thousand dollars to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote again to be heard? Selkman, Divertalmaeas.
Town Meeting Members, each year through the last article in the Fall Town Meeting warrant, the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee have asked this body to vote a sum of money to be utilized so that we do not have to raise taxes, even to the full extent that we have authorized through our votes over the past year. In other words, not only does Milford never do an override or debt exclusion, we always instead return a portion of the money available under Proposition two and a half to the taxpayers in order to keep the taxes from going up as much as they may otherwise. We do this after careful consideration of all the real needs of Milford Town Government and its taxpayers. Before we determine exactly how much money to give back to the taxpayers, we make sure that the public facilities are taken care of, that we are properly utilizing free cash, tax levy, and other sources so that we can limit borrowing whenever possible, like we have done tonight. Last year, the sum we utilized in this fashion was approximately one point, one million, four hundred thousand. You will note that this article seeks to utilize the same number, one million, four hundred thousand, of free cash for this purpose. But that is not the full extent. There is an additional of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand of levy capacity, which we are not proposing that you utilize. In effect, if you approve this article tonight, we will be returning to the taxpayers approximately one million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We are able to do this working together, as I stated previously, still taking care of the basic needs of the people of Milford in terms of services, programs, which you deserve. There are a few cities and towns in this Commonwealth that ever achieved such a result. Milford does it each and every year, and with continued good planning, we hope to continue to return funds to the taxpayer every year. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. It's the pleasure of the meeting. Mr. D'Antonio. Motion made in second, we dissolve the warrant. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those, no. Will the monitors please bring forward their attendance sheets? Monitors, please bring forward their attendance sheets.